To mind here to lead us in the invocation, we'll do the pledges after that. So if you will please rise.
Thank you Judge, let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings that you've given us, that you've poured out upon us and upon this county, upon this nation, and I pray, Lord, that you would continue to pour yourself out. I ask, Lord, that you would bless this county, that you bless the leadership of it, these newly elected officials, Lord, I pray that you bless Judge Connie Scott. And I ask, Lord, that you order her steps. Your word says that unless you build a house, they labor in vain who build it. So I pray your wisdom and your guidance to always lead this court. I ask, Lord God, that you would give us discernment in a time, Lord, where it is difficult to discern right from wrong and good from evil. We pray for your supernatural discernment, Lord, that we would be able to see through the midst. We ask, Lord God, that you just bless our county and bless all those who have any part of decision-making, Lord, that wisdom would prevail in through it all, Lord. I pray that it would be led with boldness and not fear, for you have not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind. We put all these things, Lord, this first meeting of 2023, I pray, Lord, that you would order our steps throughout it all. We pray in Jesus' precious, powerful, mighty name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I believe we have a quorum here, this is January the 4th, it is 8:36. We are at the 901 Leopard, Nuasis County Courthouse, and we are ready for a meeting, thank you. We have a resolution first on the agenda in support of efforts for a second causeway for Padre Island. I believe Brent Chesney is going to take this.
Thank you Judge. I apologize, I forgot we moved that up. This is a... Let me get to it. This is a resolution in support of a second vehicular causeway to Padre Island in addition to the existing JFK causeway. Representative Todd Hunter has been leading the efforts in regards to TexDOT with, along with another contingency on the island, which I've been a part of, and this is kind of the first round. You'll be seeing these resolutions in other bodies, hopefully the city of Corpus Christi, the city of Port Aransas, and other places to show support. It's simply an attempt to start the process at a different level or take it to a different level. The process has been ongoing for many years, but we have to go to TexDOT, we have to get on their list, and we have to get this very important second vehicular causeway started. The island, Port Aransas, the growth out there has been incredible. It will continue to be incredible, I think it's going to be even more so with all the development that's going on out there. So I think it's incumbent upon this body to support this resolution, send it to the legislative delegation and especially to Representative Hunter and Senator Hinojosa, and Senator LaMontilla and Representative Verrera, I've got to remember everybody there. I'm not trying to leave out, but it's in Todd Hunter's district, and so he's leading the effort on it. So I would move passage in regards to the resolution, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion passes. Okay, I have this signed here, do I hand it to you now, or do we wait?
Judge, can you make sure you speak into the mics so the people in the room can hear you?
I guess I got to get a little closer, sorry. Have no monitor either, we're having a little bit of difficulties this morning, but it will get better. Not that I'm aware of, oh, I didn't sign the receipt underneath here, sorry. Okay, you bring it later, thank you. Item E, announcement of, on disclosure of conflicts of interest. Any conflicts of interest or appearance of a conflict of interest with items on this agenda shall be declared at this time. I am declaring my conflict, I will be abstaining from regular agenda item A12 today. Is there any other conflicts?
No ma'am.
So being, we'll move on to public comment. We have two people signed up for public comment today. Margaret Duran, you are signed up, you're on item number two, do you want to speak when it comes up? Are you ready to speak now? Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Margaret Duran of 4022 Congressional Drive here in Corpus Christi. The Nuasis County appointment to the port of Corpus Christi is a decision with not only regional, but international impact. The former judge caused the notice to seek applications to be posted on December 16, with a deadline for applications to be submitted by December 28. Obviously, a very busy time of the year. As the newly elected judge, please show your preference for an open and transparent application process. I ask that you table the agenda item and reopen applications for this very important position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ron Graban?
Graban, great.
Graban, I did it right the first time, thank you.
Number five, okay. Ron Graban, I'm the president of the North Region Community Association, and I'm here representing the community. I'd like to speak to the issue of the Breakwater Oyster Project. This is the first time, to our knowledge, that we have a mechanism in place to help mitigate some of the damage that is created by storm and tidal waves coming into our beach areas. The point I want to bring out is, these grants are written in a specific way. And if they are modified too much, we may not be eligible for matching funds. So, I have not read the proposal, but I'm asking that you look at it and with close eyes. And we don't, and I understand that there may be $90 million in addition of matching funds. So please, when we look at this proposal, keep that in mind. And we are very much in favor of some type of mitigation, and there's been all kinds of science, and I think you're aware of all that. And the deadline is approaching, I think you're aware of that as well. So we just want to go on record as saying that we very much like to move forward on this, thank you very much.
Thank you Ron. Is there anyone else here today that wants to do public comment? Okay, we will move on to item G, accepting the minutes from December the 14th, 2022. You have all have them in your packets, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes to adopt the minutes from the December 14th, 2022 meeting. Moving on to item H, board appointments. Item number one is Nuasis County Coastal Parks Board. I'd like to say something quickly about this before I open it up to you all. If you're all okay with this, I would like to table this to... I have not had a chance to meet with these applicants. I tried to set up some meetings, there was a couple at the last minute that I didn't get a chance to see. I also think because two people stepped down, didn't fill out their application, that were on the board, I think I would be asking you off, we could reopen this application process until January 12th and possibly put it on our January 18th meeting.
Is that a motion?
A motion, yes.
I second that.
Any other discussion about it, anybody? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Judge Scott, you want to open it up until the 12th, January 12th, and then, okay.
Yes, and then put it on the 18th meeting, yes.
We're going to extend it to the 12th?
Yes, yes.
Applications open until the 12th.
Item number two, the port of Corpus Christi authority, we are now open for motions on the appointment process there. I would like to also make a motion there. I have known this individual for a long time, she was born and raised here in Nuasis County, her family has a large legacy.
Excuse me Judge, before I make a motion, I like to have nominations.
Oh, I'm sorry, nominations, yes, sorry, thank you.
Then you can probably select from those nominations is who want to vote for, but...
I didn't know the process.
I mean, I have somebody I want to nominate too, but I just think that if we have nominations, then we can select from that nomination.
I wasn't sure how this part works, so thank you.
Because my nomination would be Gabby Canales right now, so...
Do you want to just...
You want to just do your nomination?
What we've been nominating lately, so if you want to just do your nomination first, or, I mean...
I'm willing to nominate Gabby Canales.
We have a motion to nominate Gabby Canales.
Judge, I also have a, want to nominate someone?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Hernandez? We need a motion on the floor, we need a second to his motion first. Do we have a second to Commissioner Gonzalez's motion?
And a pointed clarification Judge, I'd like to see us make sure, and of all times, we should have had that in place for this position, and we, I mentioned it before, but we need staff to bring us a policy that will help clarify our appointments. I cut my teeth, as I know that Commissioner Chesney did, when we were on the city council, nominations were made across that entire nine-member body. So you could potentially have nine names mentioned, and then you worked your way down by rounds.
That's what I meant.
And I was, yeah, I think there's some great names here and some great applicants, and if we could at least allow for their names to be put up, and if there's not a majority in the first round, if we could come the second round, then let's regroup and do that.
I'll rescind my motion to go back and just nominate people, and then we select from those nominations.
Well, we've been doing it for the last three years with nominations. So if someone wants to make a nomination, then they should have the opportunity to make a nomination. And if you want to bring a policy, because we've done this, you know, we've done this for the whole last four years.
I don't want to complicate it now.
No, I get it.
I don't want to complicate it now, no.
No, I'm just saying, the last four years, we've done it as nominations. If we want to change that, then we always have the right to change that. But if someone wants to make a nomination, and you've nominated people that have got appointed, you know, so forth, so... I get this is a difficult day, but if someone wants to make a nomination, then they ought to be able to make a nomination, so, I mean...
And I agree with your point, we had some excellent candidates, we have excellent candidates.
Like I said, this is not the time, we should have had something in place, but I think for future appointments, but...
I guess my nomination stays.
Yeah, you're not...
Your nomination, so we have a motion and a nomination for Gabby Canales, do we have a second? There being none, we move on to further?
Motion to nominate Catherine Hilliard.
We have a motion to nominate Catherine Hilliard, do we have a second? There is no second, moving on.
Make a motion to nominate Diana Gonzalez.
I second that motion, is there any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I would have to stay with my nomination, so...
Understand, yes. So, three in favor, two opposed, so Diane Gonzalez, you are nominated for the Port Commission, thank you for signing up. We appreciate your service, we appreciate your family's legacy here in the community. We know you're going to serve well for the port, do well, and serve Nuasis County as well, so, thank you.
Judge Scott, she's appointed, she's, okay, not nominated, she's...
She's appointed, yes, sorry. There's probably going to be a lot of that today, so, thank you.
It's good, it's okay, I got you.
On the, moving on to the consent agenda, do we have any items in the consent agenda that need to be pulled for discussion?
G.
G.
G, you said G?
Judge, and I believe L needs to be tabled.
Yeah, I got it tabled to you.
Table L? Any others?
You said G Commissioner, Commissioner, you said G?
G. So do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items, all excluding item G and item L? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
On the second?
In the consent agenda, excluding item G and item L.
Do we pull?
Pulled, yes, for discussion. Yes, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, we're all unanimous, so that passes. Brent, you want to bring up item G?
Judge, the number one, I don't believe, it needs to be tabled indefinitely until we revisit that process. So I would make a motion to table G1 indefinitely, until you're ready to bring that back up, or someone else wants to bring it back up, but...
For now, she's going to be serving and moving later. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table indefinitely, item number one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes to table indefinitely, Nuasis County Representative on the Regional Economic Development Corporation. Moving to item number two, Nuasis County Library Advisory Board.
Judge, that's another one where it, one of, what I would like to do is bring back all of our advisory boards for the court's review and discussion of whether or not we need certain advisory boards in Nuasis County, ones that are, not ones that are statutory, obviously, not TERF boards, not EDC boards, but ones that are advisory in nature, and really review and discuss if we need these boards. And I, so I think before we open this one up, and these people will hold over, and I'm not saying that they would be on the list to not do, I'm just saying, when I saw it, I thought, let's review the whole process before we start going back down the road of reappointing and appointing things. So I would like to table this till the first meeting in February, and ask that the county manager bring back all the boards as an agenda item for review, to determine, as an action item, to determine if those advisory boards are in fact necessary for the long haul. That would be my motion to table.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion on this?
Yes Judge, I fully support this item, I just wanted just to ask for some clarity on, I agree, I think this is long overdue. We tried this, I think, four years ago, and then I think had a meeting or two discussion, and then we kind of had other bigger issues come up beyond that. But I do support revamping or just reviewing all of these boards and commissions and committees that we appoint to. Is there any work, or does a court have any suggestion, Judge, on how to approach this? I mean, this, what I recall, was it was a pretty hairy agenda item, and it took a while. So is there any work that we can do individually, say with the county attorney's office and/or our court administrator, so that we can maybe get some of that pre-work done at least? So we're not coming up with some great ideas or questions, and then we have to table again because we can't get it resolved then. That's, I know y'all's plates are already full enough, but if we're going to do this justice, that's my only concern, is if there's something that, if we have a particular group that we really want to focus on and analyze, study more, that we direct staff, and of course, maybe keep the court administrator who can keep the full court aware of it.
I really don't.
Because I'd rather, I think we could be here a while. If you want to, I'm in favor, it's not like something on, stuck on, I just, I worry that that could take us a long time.
No, we did it, John, if you remember, we did this four years ago, and we eliminated some, we merged some. I just felt like it was time to do them all now again, and so I don't have any focus, and so I, if there's a way to... And it didn't take us that long the last time, I don't, I mean, so I think a lot of them will be, got to keep, got to keep, got to keep, there might be two, you know, so I, but, so I don't have a focus, it's just more of a general category, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to make it any tighter.
No, I'm fine with that, and there may not be anything that we really feel that we need to focus on. Like I said, I just want to make sure that we, if we do have any heartburn, any concern on any of these, that we can kind of get it, at least some of the background done, right? Not any discussions, nothing official, obviously, but if we have any concerns, if we can just tell ourselves as a court, let's do that homework, let's be prepared to come in so that we at least have those questions ready, and that we could have staff or responses ready, instead of just, I, you know, I've seen it on some issues, we come up, we come up with great ideas, but it just pushes it back again. And I think that, I agree, this is something that should be done at least every four years, and let's deal with it, be done with it. But that's my only concern, is I just want to be as efficient as we can, because I know we're going to try to be timely with our meetings, and so that would be one of my concerns, is just that we kind of can ensure that that's what happens. So, like I said, no heartburn, I support you fully on this. If we, maybe just tell ourselves that we need to go to the county attorney or to court administrator, or county manager, so we can work on that beforehand.
Any other comments?
Excuse me Judge, I have an item I want to pull.
Oh, wait, we're on this one still, just a second, I'll do it, yes. The only other thing I want to add to that and comments-wise is going through this yesterday and meeting with the attorney, and it is my first meeting, and I asked kind of some of this stuff, it was like, what do some of these advisory boards really do? Do they have no authority really, they just kind of, so I would like the chance to maybe go over some of this and see what's...
Some are statute though.
Yes, yes, some are statutory, yes, so we need to make sure how we follow the laws and stuff, so, that was my thoughts in it. So we have a motion and a second to table this until the first meeting in February, and also set something up, do we have to add that to our motion, or do we just table it till...
You authorize the county manager?
It was part of the motion, a motion to table with direction.
With direction to set up a policy or information, yes. So we have a motion as a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, I think we're unanimous, so that passed, the motion passes.
Well, we tabled number L, we had a discussion yesterday, we met with Kenya Attorney and the Constable's office, and so I think with this items to be tabled until the 18th, Jeanne, would that be enough time for the 18th?
For you to finish the contract?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so my move that we table it to the 18th?
A second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, oh, sorry, John, I didn't mean to rush you. The motion passes to table till the 18th. Moving on to our regular agenda, oh yes, go ahead.
I wanted to table 2C, item 24. And I wanted to ask, or Juan Pimentel to come up and explain to us?
Which one?
2C, we already voted on to pass the consent agenda, yeah, we already did that.
Do you want to reopen?
Reopen it?
Motion to reopen, which one?
Motion to reopen?
Yes, please, I would appreciate it.
Which one, Robert?
2C on the consent agenda.
Motion to...
Motion to reopen.
Motion to reopen item C on the consent agenda? I need a second on that motion.
A second please.
We have a motion, a second, so discussion?
Juan, would you please explain to us?
Hold on, we need to vote to reopen.
Oh, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, everybody said aye, so yes, thank you Ron.
Yes ma'am.
The motion passed, yes.
Good morning, good morning Judge Commissioners. In regards to, there's some bills that needed to, were submitted by LAN. At this time, we went back and reviewed some of the, one of the bills on the invoice number 171-1007-300-48, under second page, we're recommending, Public Works is recommending to not pay for hours two, three hours, and we're recommending not to pay.
What number is that?
That's going to be on the second page of the invoice, and it's for Shane Peterson. It's two hours for, with ABM and contractors on moving President visit, there's two hours on that. And then Shane Peterson walk and talk with Jason Green to prep up for construction for President, and that's an hour, so it's a total of three hours total. And we're recommending not to pay those hours.
And do we have the county attorney's backing on that, or is that discretionary?
At this point, you, if you pass that, then we will hear from LAN on their stance on it, and we'll come back to the court.
So there's an opportunity to still come back?
Yes.
If there's any...
If they have, if they provide contractual obligation.
Then we can bring it back, yes. And no one signed off on this invoice for this amount, or this?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. No, at this time, we did submit a letter, but after reviewing it, Judge, we're recommending those hours not be, not to be approved.
They're, and they're aware too?
As long as LAN is aware that he submitted, he's, the dispute of this payment is a process. So I believe that Juan, could you confirm that you submitted this between the 20 days when you received the invoice?
That's correct. That is correct.
Any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second to pull the one invoice for the three hours to not pay.
So y'all opened it, so now you're going to need a motion to not, to take...
Oh, we just opened it, now we need a motion to not pay, yeah, take the recommendation, so...
So moved.
Your Honor, before we begin on this, it would be best to completely remove item 24, because that's the one in question, then have Public Works resubmit the application for us with the correct amount to be paid, and then we'll bring it back to you on the 18th.
Is that your wish, Commissioner Hernandez, to remove item number 24 and have them resubmit the invoice totally? Yes.
Yes Judge, that's, that's my view.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? None being, so the motion passes to remove item 24 and talk to LAN and resubmit that invoice without, clear up that three, yes.
Yes ma'am, thank you Judge Commissioners.
Thank you Ron.
Now Your Honor, you need to make, we need to make a motion to accept the remaining items on these special motions.
You already accepted it, you have.
We've already accepted them, we opened it up just for that one, yes. So now I think we're at our regular agenda items, item A, number one, discuss and consider public application to close and discontinue, abandon a portion of West River View Drive. I, we received a phone call yesterday from Mr. Higginbotham, and he is, has been very involved in this. He is ill and could not attend the meeting, and he asked if we would move this to the February, I think, 18th meeting.
January, February?
February or January?
Oh, January 18th, sorry, yes, January 18th. Any, I'll make the motion. Oh, January 18th, sorry. Yes, January 18th. Any, I'll, I'll make the motion to do that. Do we have a second? Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
And which meeting, Judge?
January 18th.
For the eight, for A?
A1.
A1.
I think we were, could we do that in February? Is there an urgent reason for that right now?
He, he just called. I, I know it's been up several times. He just asked for that, but it's y'all's.
Can we do it at the first meeting in February? That'd be possible. Rather do that one. Because I'd need some time to meet with staff on that because I still don't understand what the, there's, this has been pretty controversial. It's been voted down repeatedly. I need to understand. I'm trying to go to Austin between now and the 18th, and I don't think I can get with them between. So could we do it the first meeting in February?
And I'm gone for a week. So I'll change my motion to.
That's okay.
Push it to the, table it till the first weekend, first meeting in February. I don't know what date that is off the top of my head right now. So, and we have a second still?
Yes, second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something?
No, Commissioner's second.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez seconded. And it was unanimous vote, so we're tabling that. The next item on the agenda is discuss and consider approval of the Nuones County Commissioners Court Legislative Agenda for the 88th session of the Texas Legislature. We have Mr. Romo, yeah, hello, and, or Patricia Shipton. Are y'all going to present something? I know we were all received a copy of the legislative agenda. If they're here to discuss it, if you have any questions or anything you'd like them to go into more detail about, so I'll open it up if you want to.
We submitted, good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Judge, commissioners. What you have in front of you is a revised agenda that's a little bit more streamlined. We did put a lot of items under the category of, for us, for the court and us, Patricia and I to monitor on your behalf. As bills go through the process, there's changes, there's different wording that happens in committees. So we've, you know, after discussions, we thought it might be best for us to just kind of leave those to monitor so we're not committing the court to supporting something or opposing something that you, that we, that may, we may have differences with. But overall, you know, we've been tracking, I don't, Ms. Shipton has been tracking on behalf of the court over 100 bills. You want to speak to that?
Yeah, we have several bill, and I'll, I'll start, we'll start giving you regular weekly reports of the bills that we're tracking. I'm trying to, as you know, with their hundreds of bills that we'll monitor, a lot of them will move, a lot of them won't. We'll try to start highlighting for y'all and giving you little snippets of watch this, don't watch this. But I think we're in the correct position to monitor things until we realize what are the actual vehicles that are moving. And so this will be a lot of reporting and sending y'all constant updates and then working with your teams to give you that information timely.
Well, I didn't, I'm sorry, was somebody going to say something?
All right, go ahead.
You know what, I didn't, I didn't like, but the thing is, this whole thing is so broad. You know, we don't even know what you guys would be, guys are doing. But I, I like the fact that you're going to be monitoring the bills and get to us to let us know where the bills are, you know, and what's going to affect us from those bills. But as a lobbyist, I think that, I mean, automatically you'd be doing just about everything that's here anyway, you know. So I just think this, for us to digest this thing when we got it was a lot, you know. And were you going to be doing all this? I don't know. But you probably were going to be doing all this because you're lobbyists, you're there and you're walking around and, you know, but I, I think that it's very important, Ms. Shipton, what you just said, is you're going to monitor the bills. You know, the bills are something that we really care about. Because I don't think we have anything right now that we have submitted that we want to change that I know of. When somebody get, I know we're going, I know we want to make sure we get funded for some of these items in here, right? But like you said, but some of them will go through and some won't go through. So, you know, where, where some of these items are is really important to us or to me, you know, to see where, who's pushing it and where is it going? If it affects one of these here under one category, then we know we got to, we got to push it because it's, it's on, it's on the road, right? It's on the road that we're supposed to go. So, but I just think it's, this was kind of a little, a lot of, real broad for me to say, okay, you're going to do all this right here. Because, I mean, this is just, when you do one, you're probably doing three or four other ones, right? So, so I think that, for me, and I don't know how we divided this a day. Do we say, are we going to vote on this whole package here or do we separate? I mean, I picked, I picked like 12 of them that I wanted. But, I mean, if we vote the whole thing, then we'll vote the whole thing. It's up to the Commissioner and Scored. But I, my, my concern is just, is monitoring the bills and what's going forward and what's not. You know, if there's something that's going to affect us and it's not, maybe we need to work on it early enough that we know. Call, we can, y'all can call people, we can call people. So, but anyway, those, that's, that's just my, my, my recommendation that, that next time, I think we can't, we need to be more specific, maybe list 15 or 20 of them, you know, that we want to really push forward. So, but thank you for all the work you've done. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Judge.
I'm sorry.
And Commissioner Mares.
I know, we've talked about this for months now. Judge, if we can get a lighting or a signal system up here just so we can, easier for you to call upon us. I don't want to try to talk over anyone or anything like that. And I know that the county clerk and Ms. Hernandez also have some input. But I wanted to ask our lobbying team, this seems about the same length, maybe a little bit more, a little bit more detailed than two years ago. This is the norm though, isn't it? I mean, we kind of pick general areas where you have listed our top priorities. And these are based on conversations I'm assuming you've had with the court and I hope you've had with Judge Scott. Have you?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Good. And I know that was one of the reasons why we wanted to hold back till today. And I, and I did support that. I felt that was very important to have the judge's input. I like how this is broken down. It is a little voluminous. I mean, it's kind of broad. But we got to be broad because I know the multiple bills, the thousands, literally thousands of bills that are filed, there are certain areas that catch words to you that will get your attention when you're monitoring them. So I, I think that that's why you have it set for us, the local control, the taxes issues, state funding, disaster preparedness, governance, on and on and on. So I, I like the way that's set. I, I hear what, what the Commissioner Gonzalez is saying as far as he want to pick a few. And we still have a chance, from what I remember, and it's, it being two years, and then you got to remember four years before, from, from now also, or previously, how the system works. But we always have a chance to come back and you will have a chance to come back if there's something specific that we got to get to you to get to our delegation. Is that correct?
That's correct. Now, I will warn you all that the first 60 days is for filing bills. So we have a cutoff for anything that we want to file proactively. But we have not received any recommendations from the court to proactively pursue legislation at this time.
Commissioner Gonzalez has a tire buyback.
Oh, yeah, the tire buyback program. I'm sorry, Commissioner, you're right. The tire buyback program and the small business.
Small business grants.
Grants. So, but to, to respond to your earlier points, yes, we visited with several departments in the county and with each of y'all. And that's what, this is a culmination of, in addition to, you're right, issues that you have seen every session that come up. And we know that they have been of interest to the court in the past sessions. Things that came up, say even during special sessions last summer, like the bail bond issue, that all of a sudden got a lot of attention and was impacting the court directly. So we added that back in and got, kind of got ourselves up to speed on those issues. So that's what it, it reflects.
And, and just one other item on, I know you had multiple conversations, not only with us, and I appreciate that. I think that's important. When I think of, and I look at our county clerk, I know she's very proactive, her and also Mr. Kishnik are very proactive in Austin. They're up there monitoring actively on bills in favor or against that could hurt the interest of not only them but of their fellow members throughout the state and in the counties that those members serve. But aside from that, you're, I'm assuming you'll be working with them and supporting them when needed.
Absolutely.
I know the sheriff has his own items, but overall, this is kind of a county effort. And so I hope that there has been, everyone has been included to be able to share that part of it. Because I do want to say, this is Nuones County and we as a court backed that, whatever it may be to support or to oppose protecting those various offices. The one item that I did have a question on, on the top priority though, because I, I support all the, all the rest, but, or I think I do unless someone brings up some good concerns. But the, the monitoring legislation regarding the expansion and election of port, is election used in another, you know, definitions have multiple meanings. So this meaning of election is, is this meaning timeframe or is this meaning actual elected body?
So that was a, that was a result of a discussion with Commissioner Chesney. And election means election, yeah? Voter.
Sure. Wait, which one? I'm sorry.
Top priorities, the six down, I think.
Port commissioner's election.
Oh, right, 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 right. Yeah, I was going to talk about that a little bit.
He's going to talk about it.
Whenever you're.
And I think it was meant for y'all's discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
And Commissioner Mares, on that note, we also, we also visited with, of course, Johnny Hip, who's here today. We've been working closely with him. And as, as usual, you know, we will work with the neighboring communities with their legislative agenda, the chambers. And so, yes, and we, you know, our goal is to represent the court, the county, and advocate on their, on their behalf. Now, it does seem a little long when you look at it, but once you accept the, you know, we did delete some items and reworked some things, it does, it is pared down from.
It is.
Previous session or previous agendas that you've adopted. And to your point, to everybody's point, Commissioner Gonzalez, et cetera, that these, this is a living document. So as things change in Austin, we may move from support, monitor to oppose or, or support. And we will come to you for a resolution or guidance before we take action based on those bills as they move through the process, how they may impact you, benefit you, benefit the county, et cetera. And of course, we would love to have y'all walk the halls with us whenever you're in town. I know Commissioner Mares, you've already indicated you'll be there for some of the first, the Tuesday tack breakfast days. And it is a good time early in the session if any of you are in Austin. Not only to meet with our delegation, who knows you well, but other key members of the legislature that may be chairing committees of bills that may impact Nuones County. I enjoyed going to Austin. I spent many days there every session and have been doing that for several sessions consecutively. I have a special reason to do that because my daughter's going to be interning for one of our delegation.
We've heard.
And so I, I want to go to Austin to see my favorite person there at the Capitol.
We're looking forward to working with her. That's going to be fun.
I guess we're not his favorite person at the Capitol.
We're not.
Y'all are. Chairman Hunter is, Senators, all of them able, but yeah. Thank you.
Judge, were you done, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so on a couple, one on the governance, where it says monitor, it says monitory, but monitor, that was one that I put on that I felt, based on the confusion that was had during the emergency powers. And hopefully, we don't ever have to go through that again. But there were attorney general opinions that specifically dealt with things that were not adhered to. And so my, my hope was this would be more than a monitor and that the court would support making it a codification of the, which is a law, I know everybody knows that, the attorney general's opinion that, that specifically that cannot declare disaster on the same underlying circumstances and the lack of authority to pay bills out of contingent and uncommitted fund. And I, I don't think, I'm not trying to, to get too deep into it because there's lots of different things about the emergency powers that the, that the, and I don't want to in any way, shape or form get into the governor's, you know, emergency powers. That's a different thing. I have nothing, I have no regard, I have no desire to get into that. That's not my business. That's the legislature's business, not ours. There's 254 county judges in, in the state. There's only one governor. So what the legislature does with the governor is up to the legislature. But there's 254 county judges, and I promise you, 254 county judges probably did it 254 different ways at different times. And that really makes it hard for, when, you know, when I contact the county attorney and say, hey, what do you, what, what are we, what about this? What about that? Well, this county does it this way and this county's doing this and this county's doing, we've got to have some clarity. And so this was an attempt to baby step this into filing a bill. And obviously, we'd have to have one of our delegation be willing to take the bill. But to, but, but I thought the easiest way would be just to codify an attorney general's opinion of the sitting attorney general that maybe wouldn't be too offensive to everyone. Might be, but at least I thought it was worth a try because it was a mess. And hopefully, we don't have another pandemic. But there was, we just need some clarity. So I would like to change this to filing a bill, assuming we can get one of our legislative delegation to do it, and not just monitor it, but make it very, very clear that this has nothing to do with the governor's powers. Because I am not trying to get into that fight because that's going to be a stinky mess with the legislature. I know it. And we'll have to word this the right way and explain this to our delegation that all we're trying to do is just codify what the attorney general has already opined. And so I would like that to be not just monitor, but filing a bill. So I, but I, and I wanted to, you know, and I, and I will talk about the port one just a second, but I wanted to kind of hit on that one first. So if anybody has objection to that, please let me know. Otherwise, I was going to make that a motion to file a bill to do that, assuming we can get the sponsor.
I, I, I would support that. I thought, well, in '21, we were neck deep in COVID still, and it was COVID response. I thought there were several bills that were filed, not by Nuones County, but in the state, or was it chosen not to file anything? Because Nuones County was not the only county, from what I remember reading in the media, that there was conflicts between the courts and the emergency management powers of the county judges. That happened in several counties throughout the state. So was there any bills that were filed in response to that? And can we look at what was done and maybe what was successful about it and what wasn't? Because I don't believe any passed. Is that correct?
None of them passed. You're right. We were in the throes of COVID and pandemic response. And so, and then it became highly politicized in that it drew in the governor's powers. I think this is a little different in that we have an AG's opinion. And I think if y'all approve pursuing legislation, our first step would be to coordinate through the attorney general's office and see if they can, we can get their help. I mean, it is his AG's opinion. So see what their position is on the codification of that. I should think they would be helpful on that, but we would like to start there.
Correct. And I'm in favor of that. I just want to make sure we're following best practice and if it, what's worked before, what hasn't, that we just do that to be more efficient.
And we will look at last sessions, all of the emergency power bills and get you a little summary of that. None of them passed, to my knowledge. I'll double check.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So I would then motion that this language be changed to filing a bill subject to our legislative delegation being willing to accept on the clarification of emergency powers of county judges only.
Thank you.
And codifying the attorney general's opinion in response, in response to, or in regards to those opinions that are listed on this sheet. Sorry.
I second the motion.
Which sheet?
Are you, you not have this?
The updated one? Okay, so you're just going to change one line or?
Just going to change one word to say instead of monitor, it'd be filing a bill.
File a bill.
Okay.
Under the governance?
Under governance. It would just change the word to file a bill.
So any other discussion?
Instead of monitor, to file a bill for clarification of, and then the rest of it is correct. Just changing one word.
Just changing.
Okay, so, but you're not to, you're not going to approve the entire item?
No, no.
You're just going line by line.
On this one, no, on this one. On this one, because I just want to change the wording. I, I mean, at some point, we may just do the whole thing, but right now, I want to change this one. And then I want to talk about the port.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So it would just, the, the motion would just be to, to file a bill for the clarification of emergency powers and then the rest of what's on that sentence. Better, clear?
And we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
Discussion, Judge. So you mentioned the, the small bills grant program and the tire buyback program. So those are already items that you know that, that I would hope, and proving this, that we do move forward with bills. So I'd want to make sure that maybe we keep a separate list because I really feel important in having a document that kind of gives us these broad parameters that we support. But I do want to get specific because I agree the 60 days happens quick. We do need to get something that's very specific that we all agree to. And there's some other items.
His motion is really just on the one item.
And that's what I'm saying, Judge, because we, Patricia and Joel mentioned the two other items of bills that they know that I've pushed in the last session that were unsuccessful. So I want to make sure if we're making a motion that includes any and all bills that we have up to this point. If we need to do them separate, we can do them separate. But I just want, for point of efficiency. But I just want, for point of efficiency, whatever, y'all recommend, our clerk or our county attorney recommend on how to support that.
What I just?
I think we're gonna discuss these two items that Brent put on and see if we agree on those. And then we'll pass the whole, the whole agenda thing together.
The whole agenda, including those. But we recognize that those are, that those are gonna be bills.
Yes.
And isn't yours already have support?
I just have to amend this because on here, I can't vote to pass this whole thing unless I amend this first. So I have to amend this first
Yes.
to, before we can pass the entire thing.
Right, because Commissioner Mares, your particular items already have support legislation. So we can work on that to, you know, once approved.
We'll move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez, you had some comments?
Yeah, when we approve the whole items, well, let's go ahead and do yours first.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, do we vote on the?
We have a motion and a second to just change the wording on the monitor clarification of emergency powers to a bill. Can all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, so it's unanimous, the motion passes. So we can move on to your others. Brent, first, before Commissioner Gonzalez wants to wait until your two are finished.
So I, this was one where I get it's controversial, and I get that it may or may not pass this court. It may or may not get a sponsor. It may or may not, whatever. The port of Corpus Christi, in my opinion, but that doesn't mean I'm still not gonna try. So the port of Corpus Christi, in my opinion, should be more, the, the public should be more involved. Having a multi, multi, multi-million dollar quasi-governmental entity and understand that the port could be a taxing entity. They have that ability. They don't choose to do so at this time, but they do. I think that should have more input from the people. I think the people should have more of a say. I don't believe that particular board should be appointed. It is extremely difficult. Not that difficult is bad, but it's, it's difficult for, for 14 people, meaning, well, and then the ones in San Pat, so I'm adding on five people here and nine people at the city council. And I don't remember how many in San Pat that appoint. Or appointing the people that are running a multi, multi, multi-million dollar quasi-public entity. There are different ports to do it different ways. Some elect, some appoint. I think there's one in Texas, and I can't remember which is which. One appoints, one elects. And I think it may be Brownsville elects and Houston appoints, or the other way around. I, is that right? Brownsville elects and Houston appoints? So it can go either way. I think also with appointments, there, there are, there are times where the best people get appointed, and there are times where the most influential people get appointed. And that is not what I think is best for this community or our port commission. That, what we just did this morning was disgusting to have to do. All three of those were great candidates. The fourth, we had a fourth one that didn't even get brought up. He's a great candidate. For five people to decide, three people who run a multimillion, I just don't think that's the way it ought to be. I think it ought to be, the people should decide. They should be elected. They should be held accountable to the public. Because it's hard, it is hard to do what we just did in the sense of picking between three outstanding candidates. We're paid to do that. I get it. We're elected to do that. I get it. And I'm not trying to shirk responsibilities, but I think, I really believe this should be decided by the people of the entity that it serves. This should be decided by the people of San Patricio County and the people of Nueces County and the people of the city of Corpus Christi and not elected bodies. Again, I get it's a little controversial. I, I get it's difficult. But I also believe strongly that this is what we ought to do. And if, if I'm outvoted, it's okay. I'll move on. I'll start the year losing a vote. It doesn't bother me. I mean, we'll have civil discourse, and I'm just thrilled we're gonna have civil discourse again. And, and emphasizing the word civil, and I get to finish my whole statement without being interrupted. It's a new day. So I, I just think this is important, and, and I'd like to hear others' input on it. And I respect everyone's input on it. And if it doesn't go anywhere and I don't get a second, I can live with that. But I sure, I really wish everybody, I, I hope everyone will really think about this. This shouldn't be about us not being willing to give up power because it's powerful. There's no question. To be able to appoint port commissions, it's a, it's a powerful, it shouldn't be about that. It's, and I don't think it is for people up here at all, but it shouldn't be. It should be about what's best for our community. How can we be more accountable to our public? How can we be more to the people we serve? And this is a big step in this, and I think we ought to, I think we ought to put a bill forward. And yeah, I would make a motion for discussion to, to support.
Second emotion.
Port Commissioners.
We have a motion for discussion.
The, the motion is to, to put on the agenda, again, the words here were, I forgot to find it. Hold on. Yeah, shoot, where was the?
Commission and election of port.
It should be to file legislation instead of monitor legislation. So the, the motion would be to file legislation relating to the expansion and election of port of Corpus Christi Commissioners.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Anyone else?
I, I.
I'd like to discuss when you get through, too.
I think that we, that this is an excellent issue to, to have discussion on. And I would love for us to include the public. I, I agree. I think for an item that we're gonna advocate that this perhaps gives the public more input, that the public allowed to have a say. So if we can separate that, keep the language as is, approve that today. And maybe at the next meeting, immediately bring up for discussion so the public knows exactly on that one. Because that one's, that one's controversial. I think in the end, the public will probably say, yeah, they want to vote, have a say in it. And I have no problem with that. I will, I will support that. But just as long as we, we're not making a motion today to make it part of our agenda today. Because I think that that is short notice. That, unless that was put out in the media or in any announcement, that's not something the public is even aware of that we're wanting to tackle, short of it being a motion today. So that, that would be my only concern, is if we can bring it back in the next meeting, I want it to be done efficiently, then let's, if we can do that, then great.
Judge and Commissioner?
I have some comments on that, too, real quick. While I agree and I support this, I also, being a former legislator as well, unless the city and the port are all in agreement on this, it's, it's not gonna pass. I mean, this is basically a formality to get the discussion going. I, I don't see anything happening with this in the near future or anything. But I, I agree with the process. I, I agree that it's too important to just leave up to us. I, I think the voter should have a say in it. So I'm, I'm not opposed to putting it on here. But I think it's highly unlikely that it will pass this time. I think it just gets the discussion started. I also want to let you all know that as a former legislator as well, I still have friends there. I do intend to be in Austin, just as much as Kara and Kevin Kishnik and stuff. I do want to help out any way that I can to help Nueces County and, and get our bills passed or stop legislation that we need to stop. But it will be stuff that we agree on as a court and a commission moving forward. I, I think we discussed that. I had a lengthy meeting with them yesterday on this legislative agenda. Right now, with anything on a legislative agenda this early in a process is basically watching and monitoring. Things change right now. There's not a lot going on. I know you have to file. We do need some of those things to get started. But we all know in the end is where maybe if, if these bills don't pass, things get tacked on to other bills, and so you're watching and monitoring. That's why it is so vague and so long right now. I think it will be clarified as we go down the road. And, and added to, if there's something that comes up that we really need to know, that's, that's what they're getting paid for, to watch for us and let us know and drag us up there when we need to highlight something. So I would support this now because I think the public's gonna have plenty of time to weigh in. The city's gonna have time to weigh in. The port's gonna have time to weigh in. But that's just my opinion, and I'll turn it back over to Brent.
And I appreciate that, Judge. And John, that's what I was gonna say, too, is there's a long process in this already, and we have a short window. Because if the city and San Pat don't sign off, it's dead. And I've already talked to Representative Hunter about it, and that's what he's told me. He said, if, if the city and county and San Pat sign off on it, I'll be happy to file it. Or, or Abel, go talk to Abel about, I don't know who's, the ports in there. I don't want to speak, I shouldn't speak for Todd Hunter. But he told me, the only way this is gonna go is if all three. So it's gonna take some time. Like, in other words, my thought was if we pass this today, then we would direct staff to send this over to Representative Hunter, Herrero, Hinojosa, La Montilla, as well as the city of Corpus Christi and San Patricio County, I think, is the appointing body for the other, and say, and J. M. Lozano. I mean, there's a lot of people that has, this has to go through a lot of ringers, like, real fast. So if, if we delay this another two weeks, then that is almost gonna eat up all the bill filing time by the time it gets to all those other entities. So if we could just, if the court's inclined to pass it today, knowing that, I agree with you. It, it's been on here for a long time, but I get it. It didn't get out, and hopefully, maybe the media's here and they'll, they'll cover it. But, but, but hopefully, what we can do is pass this today, send it to the city, San Pat, our legislative delegation, and say, hey, what do y'all think about this? And, and see what they say. And if, and if they, look, if those bodies voted down or don't take it up, the judge is right. It's not going anywhere. So I would, but I think we gotta take the first step and get the ball rolling. Because not having the public weigh in on the port, and the, and the public is real interested in the port. I mean, we all get emails and texts and, holy cow, why and this, and how and this, and who's the port? You know, they don't even know who the port commissioners are, and that's not the port commissioner's fault. It's just the way it is, right? So anyway, if we could.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I second the motion because I think it's something we need to really consider. You know, it doesn't hurt, and maybe won't go through, but at least it's out there that it's been pushed, pushed again. And maybe next time around, maybe, you know, people will start looking at it a little more serious and say, maybe that's what we need to do. And I, I do, I think a lot of people that go run for the wannabe port commissioners need to have some kind of investment themselves. I mean, you know, it's easy to get appointed, but, you know, what do you bring to the table before you get appointed? And when you gotta run for that position, and you bring, you have an investment. You have an investment to, 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 to the citizens of this community. You know, to, to say, I want to do a good job. I'm gonna do the best. I'm gonna do what's right for the community because I, that's what I, that's what I committed. So, and nobody appointed me here, so I don't know anything, so. But anyway, I, I just think that it's a good idea that we can plant the seed. And if, if you don't go, you don't go. But, you know, and I feel the same way about the hospital district, whatever they have. You know, I don't know if it's part of this agenda here, but it should be part of that agenda here. You know, and is the hospital district part of this agenda here? It is?
There's stuff within there.
Yeah, we support it. But anyway, this is why my, I second the motion. I think it's time to really look at it, whether it goes or not. I think we need to put it out there, let people know what we're thinking that could be possibly happening down the road.
Right. Commissioner Hernandez, you wanted to?
Yes, Judge. I also want to tell the public, I agree with this. I think the public should have some input in a port commission, how it's run and where, where they want to go with it. So I'm in favor of this. Let's give the opportunity to the other folks, the public. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. I think we've had discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so this motion on this one item on here, not the whole page yet, okay?
Right, just changing, changing the wording.
Changing the word to, yes, file a bill.
So do we move to pass the whole item?
Now.
Judge, could I also add, I, I'm sorry, could we add direction? I want to make sure that staff immediately sends information over to the entities that I discussed about letting them know that we want to file a bill, but we want their concurrence, we want their help. We hope they'll support it and to get it in front of their bodies for a vote. So I want to make sure that's communicated well to them. I don't want them to be blindsided or think we didn't, we're trying to pull anything. You know, I'm saying this now, hopefully, again, someone will pick up on it. But I want to make sure San Patricio County, who I think appoints the ports, the city of Corpus Christi, and, and let our legislative delegation know that this is circulating around, please. And again, we do have a new senator that represents our area, so make sure that she's on the list.
Just one kind of technical issue as, as you go through this. Just so everybody's aware of the process. Since this, should everybody sign off and the bill, you pursue to file the bill, it's a local bill, so there'll be posting notices. So it's not subject to the filing deadline of mid-March.
That's true. I forgot that. Thank you.
Right. And I think you have to post it for 30 days in the newspapers that it affects.
So the public will get the notice.
So if we file, if we, if, and I, and I get that nobody may file it unless everyone signs off. But if we can get someone to file it and then see if they sign off, how does that work? Remind me of that. I don't remember the local posting rules as well, so.
You have to post notice of the bill's intent to be filed for 30 days first.
Okay.
So it needs to be done quickly.
Yeah. So, and I will also add, Commissioner, in the past, we have seen other, in the past, we have seen other members of the surrounding area delegation, specifically Representative Lozano, has filed bills, all, in various bills, altering the makeup of the port and how those port commissioners are appointed and/or elected. He may already be in the process of this. Without direction from y'all, we have not investigated that. Part of this, part of our homework may already be done in that if there's a bill out there that we can work with.
Put an amendment on.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Then we might be, we might be that much ahead of the game. We just need a direction.
That's what we pay you to do. So y'all figure that out. But I just want to make sure all of them know we're doing this.
Right.
No surprises, no catch them off guard. Let's make sure they all know that this is what this court's voted on, and, and let's see where, let's see where it goes.
Okay. There, we voted or not?
We voted. We have, it passed, the motion passed for it. So now, do we have a motion to pass the, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay.
I did, I actually need to say something if I can about this. So I spoke to, at length, several times to both of our lobbyists. So right now, we are going to have to get new equipment, an update. That is law. If we did not update our election equipment, sorry, or voting equipment, if we did not update it this past year, if we had, we would get 100% reimbursement through the state. Since we did not, because it's a terrible idea, I think you've heard about all the problems around the state with the paper audit trial in the different counties. Also, our vendor just couldn't make it happen. Even if we really pushed it, we wouldn't have been able to update the new equipment. So because of that, we are now on the hook to pay 50%. We're only gonna get reimbursed 50%. And so I've talked to Patricia and Joel about it, and I thought it was gonna be, I may have missed it. But I thought it was gonna be pursuing legislation to perhaps, you know, change right now to let us get 100% reimbursement for the counties that, you know, because we couldn't.
We, we should have had that on there.
So we just need to, what do you want to add? Just add.
Yeah, that we, that we can try to get the 100% reimbursement for the election equipment instead of 50.
So you want to coin a motion for us so that we can, we can get it? Tell, I'm, I'm happy to make it. You just tell me what you want to.
Just the reimbursement.[1649.81] Just the reimbursement. What, what, guess what? If you want to do that, Rob, whatever the county clerk wants.
100% reimbursement.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Yes, for the 100% reimbursement. Yeah, for the new equipment. No, good. But I just thought it wasn't on there, so.
Right. Yes, ma'am. We should put it on there.
So Brent, you're making the motion?
I'm second.
Just add it on.
We have a second to add this on to the list. Is, do you, any other discussion? Do y'all have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes to add this to our legislative list. Now, it looks like the, the next thing we are possibly going to do, if, if you're, is to make a motion to pass this legislative packet for them to monitor. For, we have a motion from Commissioner Gonzalez.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion on the legislative direction, I guess you call it, for our lobbyists? Yes. There's no other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? None. The motion passes for legislative direction.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much for being here.
Is number three already included in that motion? The hospital district? It is?
Yes.
So we don't need to include.
It's on the back.
Yeah. So we don't need to include.
And then would y'all, would y'all get all the red out and make it all and send us a updated copy that doesn't have all the red in it now? I know we did some last minute, y'all did some last minute changes. I get it. But if you can get the perfect, like today or soon, thank you.
So do we not need to do number three then, or do we need to do a resolution?
No, that's different. That needs to be done too, right?
Yes.
That still needs to be done, doesn't it?
Mr. Hip, good to see you. I guess you're going to let us know what we need to do here.
Yes. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. And Judge, congratulations on your first meeting. You're doing very well.
Thank you.
With regard to item 3A3, y'all approved in your legislative list an item for the hospital district to pursue legislation to basically create a second way to sell public property, at least hospital district property. And so, Judge, as you know, the mechanism for that is whenever the hospital district has a bill it'd like for to be filed, we customarily bring it to the court, ask for y'all to support that and for the public to know that the reason we do that is because the first thing that the legislator will ask us when we take them a bill is where is your commissioner's court on this item? And so this is what this does, is we're asking for y'all to approve a, a resolution supporting the hospital district pursuing legislation to create a second mechanism to sell hospital district property.
So.
Second.
Any other discussion? None. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
The motion passes. Thank you very much for being here. And I guess we'll have that resolution ready for y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
On item number, um, A, Agenda Items Number Four, Receive a FEMA Update. We are tabling that until the second meeting in February. I met with Louis yesterday and he was not ready to present at this time. He said there was nothing critical or pressing that we needed to hear, but he would like for it to be tabled.
Till February?
The second meeting in February.
What day?
The 22nd.
22nd?
Is that your motion, Judge?
Yes, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Everybody's okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Um, unanimous, the motion passes. Um, number five, Discuss and Consider the Reduction in the CDBG MIT Grant Submission to the Living Breakwater Project, Rincon Breakwater Oyster Reef, from 98 million something to 14. Um, I, I know we had some meetings about this and I know it's already been tabled twice. I, I don't like to say that we want to do that, but I want to table it.
You know, workshop.
And we're going to do a one-item meeting on January the 17th where we can look at all of the projects that are available for us to use. We can have a workshop plus then come out and possibly vote on it the 17th. If we can't get to the voting yet, then we can do it on the 18th. I think we were going to add it to both agendas.
Judge, the only conflict I have is, and, and I'm happy to do it by Zoom, if that's okay, if everybody's going to be here. I, I am planning on being in Austin that day. Uh, that is the, um.
Governors, and I was planning on being there as well, but we need to do, we can't put it off any longer. We're.
No, I, I agree. And then.
So it has to be done by the 17th, Judge?
Say again.
It has to be done by the 17th.
The.
Well, the application's due on the 21st, so I guess.
February 21st.
February 21st. So I guess technically we could do it. What we could do is, if the, I don't know how heavy the agenda is on the 18th. We could make it an afternoon, one agenda item or something like that. I just don't know. Like we could have our regular meeting and then just dedicate the 18th.
On the 18th and just do it that way where we can still.
And because that's going to, because I need the, I need the presentation on how all this money works. I, I need to understand what's restricted, what's not restricted, what's allowed, where the LMI comes into play. We haven't had that. So who can give that presentation? Because we've got to get this application in. It's due on February 21st. We're in plenty good timeframe, as long as we make a decision on the 18th. And maybe we have, maybe we have a little meeting on the 19th posted, just to have that as a backup in case we don't decide on the 18th. I'm okay with that because this is super important. But I don't understand all of how this is going to work and how all this money's going to work. But who's going to make that presentation to us? Like, no, I, I need to, I mean, we need to know. So is Juan going to be involved? Is, is? Who's going to make the, we can't just say we're going to have a presentation and not, who knows who's going to bring and who's going to explain how all this stuff is going to work?
Made with ICE.
And all the projects are going to work. No, I, you know, I know, I know Ed Rochelle will be here and I know they can do it. But I mean, I need someone who can, not just this project. I'm talking about the whole process, like how all of the money works and everything else.
What is available to spend and what is not. And I, I think we had a meeting with ICE and he has a great program that he has.
Yeah. Kind of, with CDBG, right?
Yes.
But I don't understand why we keep putting the 98 million there. What, what is it, what is it keep showing?
That was just a tabled item. That was how it was tabled from the last meeting and that was listed. I don't, I don't.
I mean, that shouldn't, I mean, that shouldn't even be on there. I don't know how it was.
Because we're taking down 14 million of this 98 million dollars is what I understand. We didn't get 98 million dollars.
No, 14 coming out of the unrestricted, unrestricted CDBG.
So, so I guess.
So my motion would then be for us to table this for a special meeting in the afternoon after our meeting, this one item, with a presentation on all the available projects that we can use the money on for this whole item, not just the Rincon, the 14 million, the 31 million that is available to be used.
Right. And, and knowing who's going to take, are you going to take the lead on making sure the presentation is? Because I'm not, I can't table this anymore, but we've got to have the whole presentation because I don't, I, we got to see the big picture.
Correct.
Juan and ICE would be doing that as well.
Yeah, also with, with grants, grants as well. They've been involved with the COG people, so we can have them. I can contact them to be here to just to explain how it works with 31 million. And what we can do, what we can do and what is, because somewhat restricted. And then half of the money is just can use it in different ways, so we can have that.
Juan, that's where I would need you to, you know, be able to come at that meeting and say, here are projects that would qualify.
That are ready as well.
That are shovel-ready. Here's, that aren't, I mean, this, we've got to do this and finish this on the 18th or 19th or whatever. But we've got to do this and finish this because we've got to have time to get our application in. We've got to make sure we get the money, the 31 million, and we've got to figure out where it's all going to go.
Yes, yes, sir. I, I'll go ahead and set up a meeting with, with Grants and also with ICE and, and sit down and prepare a presentation for, for the 18th, 18th, right, Commissioner?
The 18th in the afternoon, a separate special meeting just for that, right?
Or we could just say posted it, or we just post it at 1:00 and today we're going to do that at 1:00 PM. And then I would hope we would finish the rest of the agenda by then and then we would just go into that. Is that okay with everybody? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how to.
So we have a motion to do this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes to put this on the 18th and, and we will get this set up with everybody in the presentation. So we will be able to vote on this next time.
And I think we made it as a time specific at 1:00 PM.
1:00, 1:00 PM, yes.
That way, everybody will know when to show up for it and not waste anybody's time.
Good.
Um, item number six, Discuss and Consider Allocating American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Funds, 135,000 for a pavilion in Kiwanis Park. Discuss and Consider Allocating ARPA Funds, 225,000 for a walking trail in Diaz Park. And is, is this yours, John?
Uh, Judge, this, and I mentioned this a month or two ago when it came up on the agenda. One item, the Diaz Park is in my precinct, but Kiwanis Park is actually in Commissioner Adanda's precinct. And so I'm sure these are both important to us, but I don't mind separating them so they can be voted on their own merits. And also, I, I don't know, Adeya, are you ready on this one or do you? So I think we can, we can hold off on it again.
Can I say something?
And.
I, I think the, the most important thing here is that both of those parks are city parks. One is a Robstown city, one is a Robstown and Corpus Christi, and we can't decide to do anything unless we have an MOU with them or some common agreement.
So Kiwanis belongs to the city then?
Kiwanis belongs to the city of Corpus Christi.
But I think this was coming, these funds were, the reason we tabled this one was because these were county judge funds. So, because that was where you were going to decide and you were going to decide what y'all wanted to do with this and get with the county judge. So that's the other thing. So I would say, let's table it until y'all want to bring it back because y'all got to figure out the funding.
We can build a pavilion unless I agree to it.
Right.
That's why I was saying that if we could separate it, I think that makes it easier since they are.
Y'all can separate it and bring it back on your own.
And I'll tell you though, that I did speak with Mayor Gomans from the City of Robstown. They are in favor of this project. We do have an MOU with them, but I don't know if it's specific enough to allow for us to take any action or if we have to have one Jenny created separately to work with them on this specific project. So that would be my question, if we could clarify that, because I know we've done that on other projects, but is this something totally different and new perhaps? And the scope of it was not a dollar amount I came up with, so that was previously suggested not by me. So I'd also want to work down perhaps the price of that, still support them, but maybe not to that level.
I also would like to get together with the City of Corpus Christi and probably speak to Mayor Juarez, see how they feel about it. But 135,000, I think I can still use in my precinct.
And I would like clarification if this is coming from the county judge's funds. I wasn't aware of that.
I think it was.
Or if it's coming from y'all's funds for your.
I think, that's, I think, John, this is the one that you were surprised that it was put on under your name because it was county judge funds.
And also because there was a similar project at that park.
Right.
That was part of the issue. And I thought, oh yeah, Diaz Park, we're moving forward. And it was something not that I was working on. So, because I was wanting to work on a splash park, small one, not the size that Commissioner Gonzalez has created, but a small one that helps support, uh, um, the city there. But then there was talk of the dog or the walking trail, which I support, but we're doing some similar efforts at the county park less than a mile away, Judge. So, um, there, there's a lot of ways that we can try to be more efficient. But I do want to still support, uh, the City of Robstown and their efforts on this.
We have a motion to table, yeah.
First meeting in February?
Or we're going to table it because they're going to separate it and bring it back totally different.
For the first meeting in February. Can we do that?
Yeah, let's, let's set a timeframe, please. For, for mine at least. I don't know if Commissioner and others would want to.
We'll both for discussion. Table to separate, but bring it back for the first meeting in February.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Is that your motion or is it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll second it. Or go ahead, Commissioner Gonzalez. All in, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes to table to the second week in, second.
I thought we were going to do that indefinitely. I thought you said indefinitely.
No, he wants to bring it back in February. Well, who's going to separate it and bring all the information?
Indefinitely just means whenever you're ready.
No, I, I think setting a date is good. That gives the judge enough time, myself, and not to, yeah.
Okay.
Because when we push it, it'll just keep getting pushed.
Okay. Oh, Charles projects. That's fine. That's fine.
What's the date on February?
The 8th.
February the 8th. Thank you. I didn't have that either. Okay, the motion passed. Moving on to item number seven, Discuss and Consider Allocating 600,000 to the Santa Maria subdivision. That is your item, Brent, if you want to talk about it.
Uh, excuse me. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, this was one that we tabled also because it was, uh, um, ARPA funds. What I'd like to do is amend this because it says, Discuss and Consider 600,000 to the Santa Maria subdivision drainage issue to be funded from precinct four ARP allocations. And I'd like to add and/or CBDG MIT funds. Because if, when we have that meeting, this qualifies for that, then I'm going to use it for that. And, but I don't know, so I'd just like to put it either or and have it allocated so the people in Santa Maria know that the money has been allocated, so that Juan knows the money's been allocated, so that we can move forward and, and there is a funding source and then we can bring a shovel-ready project back. So that would be my motion. And these are my, either my precinct or CBDG MIT.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion on that? There being none. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. None. The motion passes four to one. Commissioner Gonzalez is out of the room.
No, it's four to zero.
Four to zero, sorry. One, he's not against it. Yes, sorry.
Uh, and then Juan, if you'll make sure and contact the folks at Santa Maria, let them know the money has been allocated and we are going to start working on a shovel-ready project and then I'll get with you on that. Thank you very much. And Peyton, if you're listening, if you'll make sure and reach out to him as well. Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, Discuss and Consider An Additional 30,000 Allocation To The Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. I am understanding that we've already done 50,000. This is just the remainder of the 80 that has been allocated to them. If I'm correct, I'm new here, so y'all correct me if it's, if it's wrong.
Yes, sir. I guess, Judge, this was, Commissioner Marquez was just faster than me. Last time, we had made a kind of an informal agreement here in open court. Uh, we had some leftover savings from our lobby savings from last year. Commissioner Marquez allocated, the court allocated at Commissioner Marquez's request, $30,000 additional to the Robstown Economic Development Corporation. And he just got his on before I did. And this is just a, a one-time, one-time $30,000 allocation to the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation as well. That would be my motion.
No, I'll second, Judge.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Judge, I, I just, um, I think we also need to have discussion in, since Patricia and Joe left and this kind of prompted me. Um, you know, we've had discussions on the NCDC and what is, where are we going with that? And I think that that needs to be something that part of our legislative, uh, agenda. And so maybe we can do it in a future meeting pretty soon, just to decide what, what it should look like, how it should be composed, all of those things that come with it. So I, I would just suggest that we, since we're talking economic development right now, we know the RC, uh, the CCR EDC has done a lot of work, especially on some projects in the western part of the county, right, outside their purview. Uh, but they have done a lot of work, so I support that. Uh, but I think it, it warrants that we have one big discussion item, perhaps on all the entities that serve our interest with economic development and how that should look, at least for the next year or two.
I have put that on for January 18th.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good to me.
Um, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Gonzalez is still out of the room. Moving on to item number nine, Discuss and Consider Allocating 200, 126, $200,126.40 from the, to PPFCO, Public Property Financing Contractual Obligation Funds, to purchase capital equipment for the medical examiner's office. And Brent, I believe you, you talked to them about that, or is this something that we've just been waiting to do?
This is a cleanup. Dale and I and Commissioner Gonzalez met with the medical examiner and Mr. Mitchell. And, uh, um, this was the cleanup item that we had, where's Forrest? I know he's here. Yeah, this was where we had met, right? And we, we just hadn't got it on the agenda. So you want to speak to that, Dale, real quick?
Yes, uh, this has been brought up many, many times when we first hired the, the medical examiner about, by getting some equipment, but it was never a, an official vote by the court, uh, in the possibility of finding funds. Uh, as we know, we, the county just issued the 22 piece PFCO to help fund the new accounting system for, uh, the, the county. And part of it had to be reevaluated because of the operations are not allowed to be funded through this. So we had some additional funds available in the, in this funding source to be able to cover and enhance the B capital assistance. And this is something we know that the medical examiner's been brought forward and it's been discussed and that, that is desperately needed for this office. And the funds are, funds are available for this, this particular function if the court so agrees.
So just for the equipment?
Yes.
For the equipment, yes.
Second.
Any other discussion? I don't think we need anything. It's unanimous. It's like, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. There's none. So the motion passes to use these funds to purchase capital equipment for the medical examiner's office. Item number 10, Discuss and Consider Authorizing The County Attorney To Use Salary Savings As A Funding Source For The Employee Benefits Associated With The One-Time Hospital District Supplement To The C, uh, County Attorney's Office.
Second. Sorry.
Any discussion? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. None. Unanimous. Did you need some? Did we miss something for you?
No, no, that's good. We got it.
You're really moving us right along. Um, we, these next two items, 11 and 12, are at the end of our agenda as well, so we're going to skip them to go. I think we have asked to put them at the end of the agenda in the future for.
Executive session.
Executive session, so. Moving on to number 13, Discuss and Consider The Next Commissioner's Court Meeting And Related Matters.
I'd, uh, move, Judge, that we, our next meeting will be course of the 8th, right, of February, I mean, the 18th of January. But I want to move the time to 8:30 to 9:00.
For just that meeting?
No, for all the meetings.
Future meetings. I, I want to move, I agree with that. I think we also need to add in that for future meetings, a short recess, even 30 minutes for a lunch break. And our meetings are going to be long. If they're going to be over with by noon or even 1:00, then maybe we will bypass that. But, um, we need to have a break for lunch for, yes.
Judge, I, 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 I support, um, being time-specific. I think that, that helps the, the court, but especially the, the audience and our staff. Um, I, I would ask if, and of course, if you're running the meetings, but if perhaps we could be more efficient and include the e-session during lunch, if we could have the executive session and have that during lunchtime so we could have that presented and do a working lunch here.
That's a bad idea.
I think we've done that in the past, pre-COVID, when we were trying, we could be closer. But, um, I think that might help us also just move along, so.
Great point. And also, in adding to that, now that we're going to have use of a larger conference room, I would suggest that we move executive sessions back. I would suggest that we move executive sessions back into that because I can tell you, people can hear what we do in here. And it's been relayed to me repeatedly, and I think we need to quit.
Commissioner, the only problem you would have with that is if somebody's gonna participate via Zoom, we don't have a setup for Zoom in the conference room at this time.
Guess we'll have to get one, won't we? That's pretty easy. I can do Zoom in my house. So, um, so yeah, I would think, you know, once we get that big conference room reset.
Was it in the older conference, when they moved it down here? Cause they're moving all of that equipment back to the front, the bigger conference rooms. So it, it won't already be in there?
They, they never had a setup for Zoom.
You, you can do a Zoom on a laptop. It's not a big deal.
Just making y'all aware.
No, 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 I agree. But I'm just saying that's easy to fix. That's why we've got a great IT department.
My motion has to be all that? And so.
I have.
My, my motion will be that we, uh, of course, the next meeting will be the eighteenth of January. All the meetings will start at nine o'clock in the morning. And that we break thirty minutes for, for lunch. But we can have our executive sessions during that thirty-minute break because there's not, long, there's not enough time to go out and come back.
Yes.
So, unless time allows, we don't have to take the thirty minutes. That's my motion.
Second.
Any other?
And move back into the conference.
Oh, and also recording the executive where.
Yeah, Karen just does it on a tape recorder.
Oh, I thought we were gonna do away with that, too. We talked about that yesterday.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that one. I wanna keep the recording. I like that.
We'll keep this motion the way it is.
I mean, if you could vote on, if you wanna vote on that, just do it separately. I'd like to, I like voting. I like having it all recorded. We just forget things we say in executive session a lot. A lot.
And Judge, my, I, I, I support starting a little bit later, but i- if we could maybe keep this fluid. Uh, I, I think we'll run an efficient court and be able to get out in, in a timely manner anyway. But eight-thirty is nice, just if we do still plan to get done early, cause then we can plan for a longer day here in the office or out in the field somewhere. Um, so I don't mind testing it out. I mean, I'll, I'll support this vote.
Nine.
But I always like to defer back to eight-thirty if we feel like we just got so much in our plate, especially maybe at the beginning of the year, beginning of your term, to knock out a lot of items. But if we can prove or show that we can get this done quickly, then, then I'm good with that. Nine o'clock.
I feel confident, starting at nine, we're still gonna be out of here way earlier than we used to be. I feel confident.
We'll try, and we can always, if there's a heavy agenda, we can.
Just put that in the back of our heads.
Then we're fine, as long as it's posted.
I'm good with the now, just if, if it doesn't, then maybe we should reconsider it in six months or so.
I agree.
Call for the question.
Do we have a second on that? We have a motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Hernandez, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Everybody is agreeing. Unanimous decision. Motion passes. I, I have a question about a future meeting. Um, February twenty-second. And I don't know if that's something we need to bring up right now or anything, is the Coastal Bend Day at the Capitol. And I'm not sure if we wanna consider moving that, or if we do that in February before that and wait till then to do it.
February the eighteenth was the meeting, right?
January eighteenth is the next meeting. February is when Coastal Bend Day is.
I know, but I thought in February was the eighth and what?
Twenty-second.
Oh.
So that's Coastal Bend Day and, um, at the Capitol. So, do you wanna bring it up in February or, or talk about any other possible dates? Do y'all move dates around? Are we stuck with Wednesday or?
We do move. We can, something maybe we, a day can go around and say, what's a good day for everybody?
On the next, the next meeting also, we can discuss, and then everybody sees the calendar, and then we can make the decision.
Okay. I just wanted to make everybody aware that was an important day in Austin for anyone that get into. Um, moving on to item B, purchasing, and I believe.
Okay, judges and commissioners. This is a discuss and consider finding a method of procurement, request for proposals for case management software for the medical examiner. Uh, authorize a purchasing agent to publish a notice and adopt an order delegating evaluation authority to a selection committee. Uh, this is a project that Forrest here can speak to, and, uh, I'm just gonna speak to the purchasing aspect. Uh, this item is ARPA-funded, and so we're recommending that we bid this project out using an RFP method. And, and so that's the procedures that we've described here. The selection committee membership on this one is Commissioner's Court Administration Manager, the Information Technology Director, the Medical Examiner, and the Director of Operations for Medical Examiner. And I'll turn it over to Forrest if y'all have any specific questions.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Forrest Mitchell, Director of Operations. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Judge, yeah, let me, this is a pretty, um, a quick one, too, I think. The, the case management software, and again, this is an, an area that Commissioner Gonzalez and I met with, um, the medical examiner, Mr. Mitchell. The case management software is out. We don't have any, or it's not any good. And so basically, they, I don't, I don't like sole source. I've expressed this to the medical examiner. But on this one, I kinda went, okay, we're gonna let this one go. But I don't, I don't like sole source in general. But they did their research. They went through, they talked to more than one, they got prices from more than one. So I don't feel this is a true sole source. They really kind of did their research and found what I think was the best one. The issue on this one was, uh, was the continuing amount and, and what they came to the table with, which I really appreciate them doing. We had, we, we would be committing to paying out of ARPA, um, the initial money. But then when you, when you buy software, there's the update. And it's about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, if I'm not mistaken. Are you wanting to correct me?
Well, sir, um, we are not gonna be seeking a sole source recommendation for this project. Where we, after discussions with, uh, Michael Robinson and, uh, Director of IT, we, we all agreed that the best method to proceed on this would be to go for a request for proposal.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine. Then the, the point of this, all right, let me just stay on the funding mechanism part of it. Cause the funding mechanism is we will, we will, that's new to me, as of right this minute. That wasn't what we met about before. If that's what I came up with, good for you. I don't have a problem with that either. That makes me feel better, actually. But we will pay, if the court approves, the initial funding. They have just agreed to freeze a position that will pay for the ongoing maintenance costs, because that was the issue, was how are we gonna pay for this going forward? Because, you know, once, cause the ARPA money runs out. So this is a very outstanding, uh, uh, I think, approach by the medical examiner. I really appreciate them being a partner with us on this and coming and, and offering some help on our financial quandary. They will, um, we'll, we, we, if we approve it, would, would allocate the hundred thou, or, or whatever it is from ARPA, cause we don't know. But whatever it is from ARPA, and then they would pay by freezing a position for the ongoing maintenance of that. Is that, is that a correct way of saying?
Yes, Commissioner. Uh, the court has previously authorized a hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of a case management software. Whoever selected by the request for proposal. With many of these software companies, there's always gonna be a continuing, you know, cost associated with the licensing, maintenance, support. Uh, and so whoever that is, the, the Emmys office is willing to utilize some savings from a position to potentially help fund that, uh, recurring cost.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Hernandez is out of the room.
And, uh, Judge, I'll just, uh, let you know that, uh, this is the first step in a, in a traditional bidding process for the county. Uh, the next time you see me will be when we come back to bring the selections from the results of the RFP.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you both being here. Thank you. I will move to item C with the auditor. You're on, Dale. Uh, approve the monthly financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you for this. Uh, I'm sorry for the delay of getting this information to you, but we've tried to keep this out of the, out of the agendas for a while and try to save some time when we, at, in, in November, December, and some of our time with our, getting our approvals from our P-card. Uh, it kinda delays some of the costs as well. So we'll kinda go through this August balances as, as we speak. If we go to page four and five, you see our, our, our balances for all of our funds. Uh, the one we always choose is the general fund. As of August, it's thirty-two million, three sixty-eight. Uh, we normally, normally is our, our monthly expenses are anywhere from eight to ten million dollars. So if we consume that, that will probably get us down to about a twenty-four, a little bit over twenty-four million dollar fund balance. And we believe in, when we get to September, that means we will have a, a small reduction in, in resources when that does happen. Uh, but we're working on those numbers as we talk, as we speak now. Our annual financial report is due in March thirty-first. And we're trying to get all the accruals and evaluations. We have that.
Dale, you looking at the book?
Yes.
At the book, right?
Yes. If we go to page ten and eleven, that, these are our, our, our self-insurance funds. And the one that we wanted really, really, uh, speak about is one in the, is our group health. Normally our group health is, uh, is some issues where, uh, we have, uh, some, some declines and stuff. But as you see, we have, uh, two-point-two million dollars in, 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 uh, fund balance. And why this was, was we were able to recover some of our costs from, uh, COVID, uh, uh, in, in amount of one-point-seven million dollars, which caused our fund bouncing to go up. Uh, Tomas and I need to work with the county attorney in the court. Uh, we need to establish a trust fund for the group health. And, uh, I need to work with the county attorney, make sure we get this done. Because if we don't do this correctly, and the treasury deceives that, that we're trying to give money back to ourselves, they, they tend to go against that. So we're gonna try to create a trust fund just for our group health fund. And that way, well, it'll kinda separate this fund from the rest of the county. And that should, uh, protect us from any issues on that particular.
Are we in the red, on the red on that, Dale?
Pardon?
Are we in the red, on that?
No, we're, we're positive. We're two million, we're two million positive. Those other two are, are, just because of timing. We do those towards the, we do those in, in September where we recover the cost of those. But those are just timing issues on the, on the workers' comp and general liability. But, but those will not be negative. Those will be positive. Our group health is a two-point-two million dollar positive. Normally, we're, we're close to being zero, and sometimes we are in the, in the deficit for that fund. But at this time, we're not. Or actually, we're, we're two million. And if, if all the, uh, plans go as we see fit, going through the normal process, we see that the group health will continue to grow and be, be very sound in the near, in the future. On page sixteen, you'll see our revenue for the general fund. As you see, our revenue collections as of August is ninety-four point two percent. We probably will bring in around ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent. Uh, we still are losing some money because of, uh, loss of revenue for, because of COVID activities. And some of our, 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 our balances coming in are a little bit low. Good news is, uh, some of our interest has gone up. It, we'll talk to business when we need our, our investment reports. But right now, uh, the interest we're earning in Texas class is four-point-five percent. So, at, but last year, it was a point-one percent. So that kinda tells you a big difference. So that's why we'll be, be good to begin with. So, we kinda go through and kinda give you a hint of some of the departments that are, are, are a little bit behind on, on some balances. So we're gonna go to page thirty-one. The first one is, uh, building repairs. And then all of, is, is because of some of the benefits. When, when we have a change of a, a staff, sometimes the person that left has had a single employee medical insurance or non-insurance. And the person coming in have a family. When you do that, that's a, is a significant increase in cost. So this is not really alarming that, that the small amounts for that particular department. And we're working with the department on that issue. The next department is gonna pay on page thirty-seven. Again, this is probably the same issue on, uh, some, some supplies, its costs. And this is County Court Law Two. On page thirty-nine, we have the, now this is a little bit different. If you look at the two at the top, you have the thirty-two fifty and thirty-three hundred. They had to change the personnel. They, they moved some personnel from thirty-three hundred to thirty-two fifty. That's why thirty-two fifty is significantly deficit in their b- balances, but thirty-three hundred is a significant increase. So those kinda wash themselves out. But I still need to report that, that they're, that, what, that's, what is there. The next department is gonna be on page forty-seven. Just the piece, precinct one, two. Again, this is the issues on employee benefits. If you look at employee benefits is, is what's driving that cost. As well as page fifty, you have JP four. Again, benefits is another issue. Because these are, these are small departments, and you only have four employees. The cost relation for, for, for salary savings and benefit savings is, is very small when you have those issues. Next one is on page, uh, fifty-four, Constable Precinct Two. Again, these are salaries as well as supplemental pay. When we, when you increase the, uh, going from deputy one, deputy two, or deputy three, your, your supplements can increase, your benefits increase. So that was kinda expected when we did that. As well as on page fifty-five for Constable Precinct Four. I mean, Precinct Three. Okay, the last issue I wanna talk about is on page sixty-one. Sixty-one is where it gets very, very good, where it is, we're telling you, what's remaining to be spent from the general fund is eighteen point nine percent. If we only have one month remaining in our, our fiscal year, what, what, what this would be, which should be eight-point-three-three percent, which means right around ten percent difference between that. Right now, we expect to be about eighty-nine to ninety percent of, of our total expense on, in, in funds, which is great. That's where we wanted to be. But if this kinda goes up a little bit, that's where we, we have some small decreases in our fund balances in the general fund. And we kinda expected that last year when our, when we did a rate a little bit lower than what was necessary to run. The rest of the balances just show of schedules and, and balances that you, each of you have in your precinct funds, as well as your RTA funds and your capital projects. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have on, on the monthly finance report for August thirty-first.
Do we have any questions for Dale? Anybody?
Need to pass it, Judge, Dale?
If, 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 I, if you're ready, no questions, I, I ask, I ask for it to be submitted and approved.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes for the monthly financial report. And we wanna move on to number two, Dale, the change order.
Yes, Your Honor, Budget Change Order Number Five. Now, there are some, some larger numbers on here. But as we mentioned, when we, we, uh, were requesting funds for our new software company, and we went out for that PPFCO part that was including operations as well as, uh, implementation. After we got the funds, we, we learned that the, the operations is not allowed to be expensed through the PPFCO. So we have to actually expense some of this through operations. So what we've done is we moved some of the capital expenses from Public Works into the PPFCO in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna pay for the operations of the, the software from the general fund, but we're gonna reduce the transfers out of the general fund. So if for, for fiscal impact, for the general fund, it'll be zero. But we still need to do this for a budget issuing point. So that was, that's why you see a three hundred thousand dollar increase from mine. But you'll see on page two, the decrease in transfers to Public Works for the same three hundred thousand dollars. The other large issue is for the jail.
Dale.
Yes.
All we're doing is switching from one to the other, right?
That's right.
Yes.
No. The other issue is, as we know, the jail has a, a significant number of vacancies. And they have to hire an outside company to help, uh, manage the, people coming in and out of the, the jail, as well as the sheriff's office. I think this is SecOp, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, the funds that are there, they have, uh, definitely have, uh, savings in there. There were salary regular to cover this additional outside cost. These are large amounts, but the funds are there, and they do need it because of the number of vacancies. Your other transfers and, and budget requests are very small in either office supplies or maintenance repair. My staff and I have looked through each of the requests. We believe that the, they're, they're valid and, and are justified. And we submit Budget Change Order Number Five for your acceptance and approval.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. I assume there's no more questions. Sorry. Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes for, uh, approve the change order number five. Now to you again, capital project, budget change order.
Yes, working with, uh, uh, Tracy and Commissioner's Court Admin and through the balances, trying to reallocate some of the cost uh, for our Calderon Building, as well as some of our other buildings that has closed. And we've removed it to improvements for ADA or other balances. So for nineteen oh one, we're covering the hundred and two thousand, one twenty-four Calderon Building. For our two thousand sixteen COs, which we're getting that, just moving money back and forth between the Rock Town Community Center and the community, uh, the ADA for the improvements, small, smaller balances. Same thing what we're doing for the two thousand nineteen COs, we're moving some unallocated funds to the Calderon Building improvements, interior improvements, of course. And then la- lastly, for our two twenty-one COs, we have a little bit unallocated. We're moving this for these. The new projects are the Neoces County Jail steel wall repair, and then the, uh, Hilltop Community Facility balances. The rest are allocations that we're, we're moving, that y'all have all, all agreed to, to, to cover some of these costs. The funds are there, and we worked with threesome on this, and the, and the funds are available for this approval. Uh, we submit, uh, Project Change Order Number One fifteen for your acceptance. I'll be glad to answer any question you might have.
I appreciate the new on the side, too, highlighted. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the project change order?
I have one question.
Yes.
Was there, you said one, did I hear you say one?
John seconded.
John seconded. Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Did, uh, you said something about a project? Did, you said something about a project, was there a specific project on this one, number 115?
Which one?
Number 4, number 3, capital number 115, was there a particular project on that, or what?
Well, these are the ones where we've worked with Commissioner's Court, Teresa and ID on this. So, we have the balances here. I can, we can, if you, I can review these and make sure that I can get back to you later on this issue, but these are what was submitted to her office and our office to work through the balances, and these are projects that are currently in existence.
Okay, that's right. Okay, can you get that to me later?
Yes, I will.
Thanks.
Are you okay with that? Do you want to move forward with the? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number, oh, the motion passes to approve capital project change order number 115. Number 4, discuss and consider including grants on the vendor payments exception list, not requiring Commissioners Court preapproval.
Now, this did not come from my office, even though it was put here. This came from Grants Administration. I don't know if Anna's here to discuss this, but at one time, Grants was on our exception list, and I believe she's wanting it to put it back on there because sometimes our grants have time windows that don't comply with getting it through court to be approval. But that's kind of what I heard from her, that sometimes the grant will be coming to an end very quickly, and we need to get them checks issued and paid, and the court might not be two or three weeks later. But the court had discussed that we pulled this, and it's up to the court whether you want to add this back as an exception.
I like, and I'm sorry, I read what you said, but I'm not, I can't approve this one here. I'm not, you know, I know we took it off last time, and I, you know, I just don't like to give an open window to, especially grants, you know, because contracts and everything else. I think there's something really important in timelines. I think it can come back to the day, she can get to the judge, and, you know, we can always, if she thinks that important, we can ratify it, we have to, you know, so, but, which I don't think will happen too many times. I don't like ratifications either. But anyway, so, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm going to make a motion that we don't do this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to not approve this item number 4. Do we have any other discussion?
Judge, I'd like to hear more.
Oh, do you want to speak about it? Yes, please.
I strongly request that we do put it in the exception list. We have, we have ERAP, we have utilities, we have veterans assistance grants that provide assistance for utilities, rental assistance, food, and some of these cannot be, you know, we had one invoice that was, could have been paid in the Christmas holiday, and it cannot be paid until this Friday. And they've already been calling that, you know, they're up to eviction. So, it's not only one grant, it's several grants, and the deadlines, it's the timely, some grants need proof of payment. So, to process a payment and then pay it, and then wait for bank information in order to request reimbursement, it's a timely manner. So, I really do request that, you know.
The only concern that I, that I have, I don't mind the ERAP and all that because they're dealing with our community, our citizens. But when we deal with contracts, when we deal with other agencies, I just don't like to give an open blanket, you know, and if it's something like that, something to me, you're going to pay the rent to somebody, then they should come to the judge and say, Judge, you know, we need to pay this rent. I mean, these people need to pay the rent.
That would be on a daily basis, or, you know.
But what if we, what if you, why don't you come up with a list of ones, because not all of them, what I don't, I agree with their, what they're saying is, I don't like the blanket that you're on there, all of them. If there's specific ones, like, I think ERAP's about over, isn't it?
It is, but we have veterans assistance that do.
Make us a list of ones.
And veterans treatment court.
That are urgent and not, because grants is too encompassing to put all of grants on there with all the grants that y'all do that don't require emergency relief. Those are the ones we're concerned about. I'm with Joe. I mean, if you want to do, pay the, give us a list, we can put it back on the agenda for the next time, or go, give us a list right now of the ones that are urgent, and let us look at that. But I don't think grants need to be on the list either, other than for some specific categories of that. That's fine, I can, I'd look at that. So, if you want to give us a list of those.
Well, you know, it's something else to consider is that contracts are going through special motions, and that itself has to come through court before payment is done. But other regular invoices on a process, you know, so I.
Just give us a list of the ones you're talking about, like the ERAPs, and let us look at those. But I mean, I think, I mean, nobody's.
And the veterans, they come to social services, right?
It's still a grant. It's, the grant is.
Yeah, but the social services is the one actually handling the funds for the, for the grant.
The veterans treatment court is handled by the 105th, the veterans assistance count is veterans services and social services.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, I just, like I said, is there something you can put on in the list? Let's do it. But I'm not going to, I'm just not going to give an open blanket.
I agree. So, if you want to go back and try to make a list real quick, we'll be here in executive session, you can come back. We can, we could hold this item until after executive session, you could come back with a list, and we could look at the list. So, we can get you the ones that are of urgent stuff, but I mean, I'm okay with ERAP, I'm okay with veteran stuff, but, I mean, I'm not okay with all of it. So, if you want to give us some suggestions, we'll take them.
Yes, sir.
So, can we hold on this item? Could we hold on your motion until she gets a chance to go do that, and then we'll come right back to it after executive session?
Yep.
Come back to this one.
Is that okay?
So, do we still have a motion, and so you want to retract your motion?
Yeah, we're going to hold on the motion. In a second, until we, she comes back, she don't come back, then, I don't know. We just, we just hold on.
We're going to withdraw it.
Would you want to vote on it?
You're going to withdraw.
I would just say withdraw it, and we'll come back to it after executive session. And then you can make the same motion.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be just more specific to what.
I'll just, I'll just read the motion for now, and you'll come back after executive session.
Say, here are the exceptions.
Yeah. Do a second, John.
I second that.
Okay. I mean, can you do a second to?
Please.
Okay, so, we're going to hold off one, I withdraw my motion until after.
Do you have the motion, Karen, you're good?
I'm good, we're good.
Okay. Moving on then to item D, human resources, discuss and consider temporary supplemental pay for the interim senior.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's great. No, any other discussion? All in favor, say.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Now, we are going into executive session. Public notice is given that the Commissioners Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda. When authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, to the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and for those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda item in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event the Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meeting Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Section 551 dot 1071, 551 dot 072, 551 dot 073, 551 dot 0074, 551 dot 0745, 551 076, 551 dot 086, 551 dot 087. The Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real estate, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security services, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners Court may, in an open session, take such action item as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. Now, do I need to list these two that we are going to go into session for?
If you could, Judge, the items and the exception topics.
Item A will be consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to the claim by Robert Novotny dated December 7, 2022, and related matters, Texas Government Code 551 dot 071. And item B, consult with the county attorney on legal matters relating to cause number 2021 dash DCV dash 4839 dash H. The estate of William R. Derrell Senior, deceased versus Oasis County, Texas, and related matters, Texas Government Code 551 dot 071. And that is also the item that I have announced I have a conflict with and will not be participating in. So, now, does everybody leave? What do we do?
Yes.
We still don't have another.
Oh, yeah, all the time.
The time, give me a time, please. The time is 10:34, and we are going into executive session.
What?
We are coming back to the regular meeting, 11:20. And we need to, is Anna back with the item number 4? No?
The grants, if she's not here, we'll just go ahead and go with the motion then.
What's that?
The grants, if she's not here, we'll just go ahead and go with the motion.
Well, yeah, she can bring it back.
Yeah.
That's fine. Make your motion.
Do you want to make your motion?
Well, or do you want to do these, and someone tell her to hurry up, or we're going to be gone?
She's coming, yeah.
I can email her.
Okay, let her know. Let her know. All right, so, do you want to do?
Executive session item?
The executive items, item A, consult with county attorney regarding legal matters related to the claim by Robert Novotny dated December 7, 2022, and related matters, Texas Government Code 551 dot 071.
Judge. It actually should start putting it on here, but it actually, you can't take an action item on the listed executive, so it's going to be item 3A11.
3A11?
Yes, ma'am.
And did you, did we do a time coming back in?
Yes, we did, 11:20.
Making sure.
3A11?
So, what will the next one be, 3A?
I'll find it.
12.
12.
11 and 12.
Okay. So, do I need to repeat that whole thing? No, just changed it to, okay. Then, I think you had a motion.
Okay, on that one?
To make, yes.
I don't know if we need a motion or not, you know, I think it would just allow you to go back and negotiate, or mediate with the, the Robert Novotny, to come up with some kind of an agreement.
Jenny?
I'm sorry.
We're talking to you now.
I didn't know, sorry, pardon me.
I said, do we have to make a motion? Or we just say, we just want to have the county attorney go back and do.
Go back and continue negotiations.
Negotiations with the Robert Novotny settlement, to see what he come up with.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, since we can't discuss out here, I guess, yes. We don't have to have a discussion out here on this.
No.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Everyone's in favor, unanimous decision, for you to go ahead.
12, you want to go, probably Chesney can take number 12, right?
Yeah.
Do what, on B?
12.
Listed anyway.
Executive session, 12.
Oh, 12, 3A12? I have a motion on that. When are you ready?
Yeah. 3B12, right?
No, 3A.
Oh, I have B on here, so.
It's number 12, B on executive session. The motion is to request a mediation with the other side, with Commissioner Mottas and myself attending on behalf of the county, and for the county attorney to provide a list of three mediators to choose from, and also to ask them to continue the hearing that is currently set, so that we can get this, until we get the mediation done. That would be my motion. Anybody? Anybody?
Second.
Thank you.
Are you, do I still get to call since I'm abstaining from this?
You can call it, you just can't do anything.
Yeah, it's like I'm still the president.
You're still the presiding officer, yeah.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 I'm abstaining, so.
There you go.
The motion passes. Though Anna is still not here for item number 4.
She can always come back later with, with the list.
You want to just table it instead?
We can consider so.
Let's table.
No, just go ahead and make a motion that we don't include the Grants Department on the.
Well, they already are. This would be to include. She put it back on to take, they're already on, they're on the exclusion list already, so we don't need to do anything.
But she wants them back on.
Right, we don't need to do anything.
So, I make a motion, we don't put them back on.
Right.
Okay.
Because that's what it says here, right?
Oh, she's here. She's here.
She's here. Anna, you are up, Grants Department. Yes.
You have a list for us?
Yes.
I'll divide it. Hold on, please. Copy.
What I'm passing out, having passed out, is some of the payments that have been processed for grants. Now, you have to understand also that I only did Fund 28, which is the majority of the grants, but there's Fund 28 that is juvenile grants. That's also considered a grant. The Grants Department, my department, is not the only department that submits invoices for payments. They're, they're assigned to whoever's running the program, and they submit the invoices for payments. So, this is why I did, for the short list, is the ones that have been paid from October 22 to present, or to December 31st. And those are the active grants that have been processed. The second one is for the year of 10122, I mean, 10121 to 9322.
So, I don't know.
These are all the grants.
Why would we, are you, but why, why would we want to take the American Rescue Plan Act ones off? That doesn't, that's not urgent.
No, I mean, these are invoices that get processed. These are all invoices that get processed, so, I mean.
No, I get it, but do you have a list of the ones that, in general categories, that you think are urgent? That was what we had asked for. Like, I mean, there's 30 or 40 of these here, you're not asking for all of these, right? I know you're asking for all of them, but we're saying, what are the urgent categories?
Well, sir, to me, all grants are urgent because of the timely matters that we have to, that programs have to be processed, reports have to be programmed.
I'm really trying to help you here, but you're really not helping me a whole lot. So, you need to tell me which ones have to be done urgently, or I'm just going to support his motion. I mean, I'm really trying to help, but you're not giving me, you can't just say, oh, I get that you think that, but we asked you for something different and said, go give but we asked you for something different and said, go give us a short list and you're coming back and not answering the question.
And I guess the short list is the short list that I provided you. That is only processed so far.
Flint Hills Helping Heroes? Why is that urgent? I mean, you, this.
Okay.
I, I would just make a motion to table this till the next time and, and let her fine tune this a little bit and work with or something, because this does not help me.
Yeah, because that, like the, and I agree, and, and I want to give you as much, um, uh, as much flexibility as you need, because yes, sir, I know there are timeframes that come up. But like the HAVA election security, that's, it's going to be needed to respond to, but it's not something that comes up today and we got to approve by tomorrow. I mean, we're given some time, right? So that, that, so I, I agree. I, I want to give you all that you need and if you can give us something that, that kind of shrinks down this list, I think that that will be helpful, because I do feel that there are times where between you and the judge, you should be able to, to get the authorization straight from the judge and not to bring it to court, because I know that there are some things that are timely. But I agree, not everything should be just carte blanche on there, just.
Such as what you discussed earlier, someone with their power during the, you know, December and the cold or something, the veterans' assistance and stuff, I think, is what we were all thinking in, in those kind of lines.
With something like the release, uh, I know that there were some invoices that have early release that get signed by the judge, by the, and the auditor submits them from their accounts payable. That is something that certain invoices that need to get paid get processed in that manner.
And that's fine, and that's fine, but you know, but that's urgent. When it comes to people's lives and safety and rental, I have no problem whatsoever. But I just can't open it up to say, Grant's going to do everything they want to do without having to court. Because, you know, you have C D, T W B G A also, and I don't think it should be here, but, you know, I just. I'm, I'm going to, I guess I'm going to go ahead and just table my motion till, till the next meeting, till January the eighteenth.
I'm going to just table this until the eighteenth and see if she can tighten up the list and give us one motion.
Yep.
That'd be my motion, Judge. And you, or you're, or I'd be seconding his motion. Sorry, I'm seconding his motion. He made it.
Do you have any other discussion, Commissioner Hernandez? Did I overlook you or anything?
No, Judge, I feel the same way as, uh, Commissioner, yes, Commissioner.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes to table two, the eighteenth, and hopefully, you know, and I can maybe even get with you on that and let's try to find out what is actually emergency, quick, we need response to and everything. So let's try to set something up and do that together. Thank you very much. And that is the end of our, um, agenda, so officially, we're done.
Adjournments in, adjournments in memory.
Oh, adjournments in memory, if there are any upon request?
Uh, I don't have any.
Nobody has any adjournments in memory?
Good, ready, two twenty-two.
Anything else, then we're good. Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's been my pleasure for my first meeting. Thank you very much and we are officially adjourned. At eleven thirty-one. I've got to remember that time.
Good job, Judge.